Hey Greg, you're frozen. Here we go.
I'm frozen.
Okay, get started. Okay, welcome everyone to the planning and zone town of Waterford Planning and zoning commission. Meeting for February twenty eighth, twenty twenty three. This is a web based call, so we are operating under the following procedures. The session is being audio recorded. Please be advised that today we are also recording the video of the proceedings. We will not use a chat feature in this meeting. And to ensure sound quality, the default role rule for this meeting is that everyone will remain on mute. Commissioners and staff will generally remain on mute except when speaking or voting. This meeting is open to the public, but is not a public hearing. Therefore, no members of the public may speak unless specifically invited to do so. If a member of the public creates an audio or video disruption, they may be manually ejected from the meeting upon recommendation of the staff or the chair. We appreciate your attendance at this meeting. Did you have any questions about this process? You may call our staff at eight six zero four 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 five eight one three after the meeting has ended. And with that, I turn it over to the chair.
Okay, hello, everyone. Hey Bert. Let's see. Item number one, call to order appointment of alternates. We have a full slate tonight, Bert, so you will be an alternate. How about item number two, approval of the February seventh, twenty twenty two meeting minutes? I don't want to make motion for that.
Greg, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
No second.
Oh, February. Seven, twenty twenty three. Let's see, by saying hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi.
Bye. Great. Item number three, application receipt. Number PL dash twenty three dash three, request of Mark Sperry, owner and applicant for coastal site plan approval for grading at twenty one Asagachi Road, R twenty zone in accordance with sections twenty two, twenty five point four and twenty five point five of the zoning regulations. And as shown on plans entitled coastal site plan, new stone scour wall, Nyonic River, January third, twenty twenty three, actually required by five four twenty three. That's an application that's been sent to us, correct?
You received that earlier.
Okay, so that was for everyone to look at before we act on it at one of the upcoming meetings. Item number, any other applications that we received?
No, no, no other applications to be received.
Okay. Some action items or might require a little more in depth review from the commission. And on such a short timeframe notice, didn't, I just didn't feel like we would be able to give it its due consideration, so. We're just going to put the presentation by Rory off to the next meeting. If everybody can look at that by then and try to. Make your comments, your thoughts, your suggestions, comments, et cetera, ready for the next meeting. There's a lot, there's a lot there. There's findings of the stakeholders. There's some proposals, there's some layouts, there's some goals and direction on the different topics, so. If you could take a look at it, if nobody, if nobody's seen it yet, it's in your email from this afternoon. Item number five is administrative review, discussion of potential amendments regarding accessory dwelling units.
Okay. I had prepared a memo that was delivered to the commission. Based upon discussions that we've had up to this point relative to amendments to. The proposed language that the commission was considering for for accessory dwelling units. Last we met to discuss. To discuss the ADUs. Topic, basically my memo covers, covers three, three items. The first one being. How we were considering the floor area of the principal building. In determining the maximum size of an ADU and whether or not. We were looking at gross floor area of the existing principal structure or living area. At the meeting, we had talked about using gross floor area. But further review after that meeting by, by, by myself. Came up with the fact that it's really living area that, that, that was the commission's desire to consider. Towards establishing a maximum size per an ADU. The gross floor area as defined by, by the assessor and on the assessor records includes such items as. Crawl spaces and attics, unfinished living area, garages, porches. Various things like that is included in the, in the gross floor area calculation. Whereas the living area, which is also identified on the assessors records, includes areas that don't, that will, that will not include the non livable. So, you know, your basic living area of the house is included in that. And those two, those two values. Are identified on every street card for every part, for every property in town. And so it's easy for, for us to determine how much living area is, is in the house. And what I had done. Along with that memo is that I provided a couple of examples of the street card. For the commission to look at, which identify the differences between gross area and living area. And I believe it was the commission's intent to, to actually use living area. In determining the maximum, the maximum ADU size. So, I guess we can, at this point, discuss that.
Okay, I, I, I'd like to hear what everyone else thought, what happened at the last meeting. I, I was under the impression we were going with the floor area because it was larger than the living area.
That was, that was my, that, that was my. My initial, my initial approach, not really knowing that the gross floor area also included areas that. Really aren't, aren't part of the living area of the house. Really of, you know, like outdoor porches and, and decks and. Garages, things like that. I mean, we're talking about creating an accessory dwelling unit, which is a living unit. Based upon the living area of, of the principal structure. So, that's, that's, you know, that was, that was my approach to the, to. To the difference between gross area and living area. I initially went in gross, I, I admit that, I, but through further, further review, I think. The way I left it with the commission is that you guys were looking at. Using living area in the house and not to include things like garages and unfinished attic space and basements.
Mark.
I don't, I don't, I don't recall that, but it's interested to hear what everyone has to say. Karen?
This Karen, I have one question and, and I apologize because I know we went over this before. Was it the gross area that? It was the footprint as if it were a bird's eye view and it didn't matter how high somebody went, it only would count for the. What you could see looking down. So if you had an ADU. If you had a house that was a thousand square foot, the AD would be five hundred, but the five hundred was just the footprint on the ground. It didn't matter if they went up. To the like fifteen, seventeen, twenty foot that we had talked about?
Yeah, the, the, the footprint of the building is the building area. The, the issue with that is that the building area doesn't take into account the floors. Of, of your living area. It only takes into account the perimeter of the, of, of the building. So you may have, you may have a one thousand square foot building area as you're looking at it from a bird's eye view, the footprint. Maybe one thousand square feet, but it could be a two story. So you actually have two thousand square feet of living area.
So we would only have counted the one thousand, is that correct?
You would, you would have if we had just used building area as a calculation.
But if we're talking about living area, then the second floor would also count?
Yeah, right, right. So, so what's, what I'm, what I'm proposing here is that, is that we use living area.
Okay. And when it comes to the ADU. The, we're talking about living area as well, so it doesn't matter how tall the ADU is, it still has to conform with whatever that fifty percent of the living area of the main houses, is that correct?
That's, yes, that's correct. The ADU will be the living area of that.
Whereas if we had gone the other way, the ADU could have been taller and. Technically could have been bigger if they put a loft or something, if the perimeter was still the fifty percent. Okay, thank you.
I think, isn't, I think the issue, Karen, is, was between gross floor area and gross living area because we had. Decided that we didn't want gross building area because that was the footprint. So I think the commission had decided on gross floor area. Right, Mark? And then we, then now we see gross living area. Because we, we had thought about including the garages and the porches and all those things because really we want it to be. The biggest thing is being proportionate to the size of the building. So, you know, so, you know, I know we have two examples here. You couldn't get a bigger garage than the one that you gave us, but most houses don't have that. So. You know, I, I think the goal of this is to allow the most housing options possible. So I, I don't know, I think we need to figure out that gross floor versus gross living.
Well, I think that's, that's kind of what I was getting at is that if. If the height requirement doesn't factor in like it would with gross floor, then you might get an accessory that's. Not necessarily in proportion because it could be tall, but it would still be in compliance because the perimeter would be. So I think the living area would restrict the ability to go up because it would still count against the square footage of the unit, is that correct?
Well, the ADU can't be higher than twenty. Right, Mark? Mark?
Yes.
So, so, but the ADU can't be higher than twenty, right?
ADU cannot be higher than twenty if it's anything. There's a lot, there's a lot of variations. If it's a brand new, newly constructed. Accessory dwelling unit, it can't be any higher than the house. If it's an existing garage or shed that's going to be converted. Okay, then it cannot be any higher than twenty feet. A lot of scenarios that.
And what's the distinction for?
I'm sorry?
What's their, why is there a distinction between new and exist prior?
Because, because existing structures, existing accessory structures are built closer to property lines than a house would be. They have, they have different, different setback restrictions. So, in other words, if you have a, right now, the way, the way the ADU language is, is proposed, you've got to locate. A brand new, a newly constructed ADU, it needs to meet the setbacks of a principal house, of the house on the lot. And, and therefore you can construct it up to the height of the house. If you have an existing accessory building, like a garage, detached garage or a shed that's been in existence. Ten feet from a property line, which is, which is. Which is a valid setback for, for an AD, for a accessory building. Going up. You know. Basically, the impact on the neighbors is going to be such that, you know. You, you know, if, if you were to go up within, with an existing accessory structure to the height of a house, that'll be potentially a thirty five foot tall structure, ten feet off the property line. Previously used as a garage or a shed. And so I think the impact, the impact to adjacent properties is going to be much greater. So the twenty foot height restriction, which is still higher than an accessory building can be constructed by five feet. The twenty feet. That's what was, you know, that's what was tossed around and what was, what was put into the proposed language. That deals with existing, existing structure on the property could be converted into a ADU.
We're hurting people, we're, we're, we're hurting people who have existing structures that are not near the property line. We're not treating them the same name as somebody who has a new. ADU.
Right, and actually I had, I had thought about that this afternoon. You know, we would be treating. Newly constructed ADUs. Differently than someone that had an existing accessory structure that was located on the property in conformance with the principal structure set back.
Right.
Right, and so, and so what I, what I propose that we do is treat those both the same in terms of height, not to exceed the height of the house. So providing the accessory building garage that's already existing on the lot. This is, is located in such a way that it currently meets the setbacks for a principal building, then that can go up and be, and. Be raised up to the height of the principal structure. It's those accessory buildings that are either nonconforming, they're closer to the property line than they should be. Or are, are at the property or, or, or at the setback line that's required for an accessory building, which is ten feet. If they're there, then twenty, twenty feet would be, would be the max.
Okay, so we need another paragraph in here for, for that.
Yes, yeah, I want to treat the new ones as, as good as they are already, would be in the setbacks of a principal building.
I'll weigh in on the, that gross area versus living area. I, I think. I think that the. The living area does make a little bit more sense, especially now that I'm looking at some of these. Examples, you know, for instance, with the, the first one. There's ninety six square feet of gross area for cathedral ceiling. You know, that's not, that's not floor space that is in the principal dwelling, but yet it would be factored into the size of the, the ADU. But I think that the second example actually is probably a little bit. More like what, what I would expect to see for most, most houses in Waterford, I think. Maybe I'm wrong there, but. I, one of the things I think is interesting about this example is if you look at. The gross area and the living area here and then look at, let's see, section. Three point three six point one point seven, which is. The size of an ADU that you can get on a lot that's less than five acres, which again, I think is probably what most of what we would be seeing in Waterford is. You know, you can only have. Either fifty percent, the lesser of either fifty percent of the living area or fifteen hundred square feet, whichever is less. So if you go back to that last example. If we were going with. The gross area, I think that particular regulation is, is sort of meaningless in terms of the lesser of the two. Most places I think are going to end up being basically just fifteen hundred square feet. So, so if we're, if we're interested in having. A cap that moves with the size of the principal dwelling unit, I think the living space is going to be. The living area is going to be a better metric to use to sort of calculate that, that percentage than. The gross area and, you know, I, I think I also take Mark's point too about including decks and garages and in places that aren't actually going to be, you know, interior living space. You know, maybe that's not the best way to do it.
You make, you make a good argument, Tim. I, I, I. I, I see your argument looking at this gross area, but I think some of it should be included. Like I, I agree, the basement shouldn't be included, unfinished attic maybe not included. But the decks and the porches, those can be used by. Predominantly going to probably be used by the in-laws or the family members or whatever that are part of the ADU, so I don't have a problem using the porches and, and even the garage. But I agree, the basement, this, on this, this is a, this is a. An example that really isn't the common type of property, but with seventy nine hundred square feet. But if we took out the basement, the unfinished attic, we're down to a sizable. Number of, you know, four thousand something.
Well, here's a question from, from Mark. You know, say an ADU was going to have a deck or a porch, would that count towards the, the, the living area cap? That we're placing on it? Or would it be just like with the principal dwelling where that, you know, accounts to the gross area but not the living area?
Yeah, right. I'm trying, I'm trying to keep it the same. So if we're counting the living area of a principal building. You know, we're going to include the living area of the ADU only. So the ADU would have a porch, let's say we don't, you know, you know, we, we go with the living area. The ADU has a porch that wouldn't be counted. Towards their square footage of living area. I'm trying, I'm trying to keep the balance the same, living area to living area.
So the ADU could have garage?
Sorry.
The ADU could have a garage?
You can have a garage, sure. Okay.
Sorry, Tim, I didn't need to, to, to cut you off there if you were asked. That was a good question. If, if we're going to keep it all same, I think that's, that's a lot better.
Also trying to keep it as. Kind of as, as simple as possible when applications come in. If we use what the assessor has on the, on, on the street card. You know, I think, you know, we're trying, you know, trying, trying to make administration in issuing permits here is as easy as possible to. For both the applicant and, and, and the reviewer here on our end.
And I, I believe if both are calculated the same way with living area, that's going to be the most consistent with them too. You won't start countering garages and. Screen porches and decks and so on.
Well, how about this? I, I, how about if we talk about right now adding that paragraph that treats the. Twenty foot height. Limit the same for new construction and properties that have an ADU that meet the setbacks of the principal residence. And treating the ADU and the home the same for a living area. But also putting in language maybe that, that they're specifically treated the same with respect to, to porches and garages and all that other stuff. So that there's no, there's no confusion for somebody coming in, they know exactly what they can do, they can put a little porch on, they can put a good deck off the back, they can do. You know, you can put in a basement if they wanted to. They can do pretty much what the house can do. And we're comparing apples to apples. How about that for discussion if, so we can kind of move this forward?
That sounds good to me.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with that.
How about Vic, Karen?
I would agree with that, Greg.
Yeah, that sounds fun.
Okay, so you want to, any, anything else in here? And I didn't pull out my regulation for now, but twenty five point three is, is what, Mark?
Twenty four. No, plug zone? Twenty five point three, sorry.
Yeah, in, in these, in the, in.
Yeah. Twenty, twenty five point three of the flood hazard regulations.
Oh, okay.
So, what, what I did was in, in terms of, of. Any, any construction within a FEMA designated. Is going to have to meet the standards for flood hazard like any other, like any other construction of a residential or any building within, within a flood zone. So twenty five point three outlines the standards and requirements and procedures for constructing in flood hazard zones.
Including substantial improvement, right?
Amendments that we talked about, the three amendments, right?
Sorry, Greg, that last bit, I think you broke up a little bit. We need, could you repeat that?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to know if anybody else had any other comments on this proposal, specifically three point three six point one point eight with the chart. For the different acreage and the different size ADUs. And if not, we can move this forward with the couple of amendments that we talked about this evening. No other comments from anyone? Okay, so just to, to be clear, we're going to do, we're going to do living area. We're going to have language in there that treats the. ADU, the existing ADU that meets the housing, meets the setbacks for the principal residence the same as new construction. And we're going to put language in about treating them the same with respect to decks and garages and basements, et cetera. So that we're comparing living area to living area, that, right? And maybe we can get this. Ready to go and, and, to be a public hearing, right?
Right, right. What I'll do is. If you, if you want, I can go ahead and draft all those in there for you, just, just so everybody sees it before we make a formal application.
Right, okay. That'd be great if we could have that, can we have that for the next meeting?
Yes, I'll have that ready for the next meeting.
Okay, I know it took a lot of work on the commission and, and especially your part, Mark, and admin part, but I, I think, I think it's going to have to be a good regulation. I think it's going to be helpful to the, to the residents in the town. I think it's going to. Create some good housing options and, and help some families stay together and maybe even get some income on, on some sort of rental or at least keep families together, so. Thank you for all, everybody's work on it.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
The next item is adjournment, but do we have any update on any other pro, programs or, or, not programs, but projects?
No, I don't have anything new that's come in. Just what you see going on around town is the continued construction. I do anticipate though, having Julie Road in here. For a, for a presentation to the commission very shortly, if not, not at the next meeting, but, but probably the one after that.
Okay, and, and I just have one administrative item for the, for the commission to, to think about. You know, we took on the plan of conservation development ourselves, which was probably a good move. I, I just think that we're going to get to a point soon where we're really going to have to do a little bit of, of heavy lifting on it to, to, to give direction. On the, on the goals and direction for the plan. Do we want to do that at a regularly scheduled meeting at night? Or do we want to have a special meeting, either a nap, noon meeting, Saturday morning meeting, a special night meeting for it? We want to handle that because I, I think we really need to put in a little bit of time on that. I'd be, I'd be interested to see what, what he's thinking is on that.
I think a, a special meeting makes sense. And, you know, for the most part, I could make myself available in the afternoon, but my guess is for, for most of our commission members, evening or weekend is probably going to be better.
I'm not opposed to a special meeting and I'll make myself available off whatever meets the rest of the needs of the commission. I'm not opposed to a special meeting and I'll make myself available off whatever meets the rest of the needs of the commission.
I can also make myself available for a special meeting and I have, I'm flexible, whatever works for the commission, for everyone on the commission.
I think a special meeting is a good idea. I think we should give ourselves a little bit of a break between the March eleventh thing and the special meeting though.
With, with the, which is the presentation, right, Karen?
No, the March eleventh thing is that Connecticut Bar Association, like all-day webinar thing.
Oh, okay.
Just want to keep that in mind, like.
Right, it's a good, it's a good point. I forgot about that.
That's on a Saturday, right?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. So, but, well, if we're going to have the presentation, Mark, what's, what's our next meeting?
Next meeting is the fourteenth of March.
Okay, so sometime late March, maybe after we digest that presentation and maybe get some feedback if, if we're provide feedback and get some answers from the consultant. Maybe at the end of March, first week of April, maybe a four o'clock meeting or something. So we can go maybe four to seven or four to eight. If we needed to, a special meeting, is that, that good for everyone?
It works for me.
All right. Okay, and would Tuesday be the best day?
I think probably for me, just because I'm already kind of, you know, holding these, these nights, but.
Okay. All right, so we'll try to fit a, a Tuesday meeting from like four to seven, four to eight, something like that, that we can just focus just on this. All right, I think that's it till March fourteenth. Actually, it seems like a long time away, but tomorrow's March, I forgot about that. So not too far. We have an adjournment and a number six.
I'll, I'll move that we adjourn.
Thanks, Tim. Second, bye. You want to, Tim? Push made second to adjourn all in favor?
Hi.
All right. Hey, good night, everyone. If you can look at that presentation that we got in the mail today for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here, guys.